At this point, I'm just gonna open the meeting. And we have decided to hold off on approving the minutes from the last meeting until the next meeting, so, because Gail, I don't know if she was prepared or not, but she asked me if we could hold off till the next meeting.
Okay.
I was fine with that. So unless there's any new business or old business, we'll move into the crest of the meeting. What do we got first?
Well, I think you might want to continue the public hearing for 23 Cape Road. If you remember at the last time we had them in, there was this whole thing about a setback to a residential zone, and we received a legal opinion from their attorney.
Yep.
I gave it to our attorney, but she's not gonna have it done till next week. She's too busy with town meeting right now. So they respectfully asked for continuation to the 15th.
Do any of the members have an issue with that?
No. Make a motion to continue the hearing. The 23 Cape Road to May 15, 16.
Second.
Any comments from the community? Everybody all set? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. So that's moved off to the 15th, and we'll continue then. Jack, you're gonna follow up with Cassis. Make sure she renders that, please.
Yes. Follow up with who, Bill, did you say?
What's her name? Cassis?
Dylan. No?
Oh, no, the attorney I was talking to.
Oh, Caris. Caris.
Yeah.
Yes.
Good night, Mary. Enjoy.
I did talk to her today. Briefly.
Okay. All right. So probably the next item is the zoning bylaw, I presume.
Right. And if you all remember where we left off is, we went through the bylaw, we answered questions as much as we could, but I had suggested you continue till tonight because I hadn't had a chance to go over comments from John Nennart.
Yep.
And I've now gone over them, and actually, I'd like to go point by point with you guys. I say 80% of them, I've included. They were good points and made a lot of sense. And then the 20%, you'll understand, I think, when I say it. And I made some of these changes already, and I sent them to John, and he has not gotten back to me, so I'm taking that as a good thing.
All right. All right, go ahead.
The first thing is, there was a little confusion on his part. I could see it on the use table where we either have a Y, meaning it's allowed by right, or a PB. I had Ys, and technically, any use in this mixed zone is by special permit, so I changed them all to PB. That was a simple one. Oh, he had a comment about, oh, about what's allowed and what are the submittals, and we had that they may submit, and he suggested that they shall submit, which is absolutely what we should have in there. Next is the definition of multifamily. We had a, it's called, we'd had a sentence that said that it could be separate buildings with separate entrances, and he had some language that we didn't really have to deal with the entrances because they are dictated by state building code, and he's correct about that. Zoning does not trump, no pun intended, state building code. We had some language in there about shared amenities. I was always a little hesitant why I put that in there, and what I was thinking was shared amenities were like a well and a septic system. But it could be sidewalks, it could be other things. So instead of having a long list of things I probably can't even think of, I just got rid of it. I don't, it was, didn't serve any purpose. Obviously, wells and septics are shared amenities, and it wasn't defined either. Well, we had in there that documents such as conservation restrictions and condominium documents should be a condition of approval, and he said that is a heavy lift for upfront, and I agree with him. First off, conservation restrictions are done by the Conservation Commission, not the Planning Board, so you don't have any say in that. And the condominium documents, they're very complicated, can be very complicated, and I've always had them and other projects be a condition prior to an occupancy permit or something like that, that they submit the condominium documents. So I just changed the language that they may be a condition of approval if appropriate, something to that language. So you're getting the gist here. There's one that I, I don't know if disagree is the right word, but they were concerned about the ambiguity of having a community impact statement, and we define that with quite well, I may say. And I disagree with them. I think it should stay in there. I know when I talked to the neighbors, at least off of Hastings on Washington, that that was important to them, that they get a sense of how, whatever proposal it is, wherever it is, how it's going to fit in with the neighborhood, and what impacts or not, or what impacts it will or won't have. So I'd suggest you keep that in there. That was important to the neighbors, and I don't think it's that big of a deal for a developer.
No, I understand their point, that it's kind of subjective, you know?
Yep.
And they're gonna taper the statement to, you know, obviously favor the project.
Right.
We'll just have to, in cross-examination with a peer reviewer.
Right. And you're gonna hire an environmental peer reviewer anyway.
Right. So I have a problem with leaving that in there. There's definitely grounds for that. It's, I just, you know, they're not wrong, but they're looking at it from one side. We've gotta look at it from two. So I think, unless anybody has objection to that, I think Jack's right. It should remain.
Next, we went back and forth about wetlands areas and priority habitat. Priority habitat does not preclude development, much like wetlands can, but you have to accommodate whatever the habitat is, which can sometimes be expensive or not expensive at all, according to what the species and habitat is. I thought it was, should be included as a reference, that they have to show us these type of things, and they're gonna be required by law to do it anyway, so I didn't do much with that one.
No, I don't think that's necessary. Like, you're right, priority habitat is gonna manage that anyhow, so.
Right.
I don't think, I don't think anything, what you had in there, that was one of the things I kind of started out in his remarks, that I necessarily didn't agree with. I think, you know, Mesa is gonna manage that anyhow, so.
Yep. That's right. They will.
So I'm not gonna agree too much about whether it's in the bylaw or not, but I think it notes mention.
Next is regarding the affordable housing statement, and he is right, or that we should reference what they call the LIP guidelines done by D H C D. LIP is Low Impact Program. And that's the standard that D H C D wants to see before they accept a unit as an affordable unit. In other words, we don't make this up, they don't make it up, the state guides us on making sure that whatever unit's designated as affordable, that it is in perpetuity, and there's all kinds of guidelines, indeed restrictions, et cetera. And so I just added that extra language. I didn't see a problem with that. He mentioned about four, about the three acres, he was worried that that was not enough density, but I, at least with one developer, it wasn't a problem, and so I didn't see any reason, and that was also there.
Talking to three units per acre.
Yes.
Yeah, he was looking for four units per acre.
Yep.
You know, I think, once again, that's one of those things, you'd have to see the project and what the project can manage, but I think in a town like Mendon, yeah, I think three units per acre would be fine. I'm not sure. I'd have to see a draft for a four-unit-per-acre project to determine whether that seemed reasonable or not, but.
Well, it was for Hastings Street, I can tell you that.
Yeah. Yeah.
Oh, and then, in our frontage requirements, we are requiring that the frontage is in an existing HB or GB, both our business districts. And first off, there was a reason for it, and that's because the business districts are there so they can handle that kind of access. But secondly, everything we're proposing is along Route 16, and everything along Route 16 is Zone GB, so it's not an issue. I don't see this as an issue. And he probably didn't know that.
Yeah.
Oh, there was, next is, we had some references to lighting and landscaping, and I used the word mixed-use project, and I just, he wanted it just changed to a project, what did I put in? I don't have the bylaw right in front of me. Pursuant to this bylaw, something like that. I didn't have a problem with that. We used a term called fixed detriments, and they're like features that are more difficult to move around if you wanted to do certain landscaping, or get a road in, or a driveway, and things like that. And I, he just said, you know, to say that you can't move a fixed detriment in this day and age is kind of not in reality. So I just said that we avoid them in as, so far as practical. I mean, I think that's enough. We, yeah, so that's what I thought. You know, it could be a wall, but a wall is movable. Maybe it's ledge. I don't know exactly what we were talking about, but I think as far as practical fits that. I only got a couple more, and the next one is an important one. This is to deal with the Housing Choice Act, and as Bill knows this, but for everyone else, the Housing Choice Act is law in Massachusetts. It was passed a year ago, and there's a whole host of uses that get special treatment by both the local permitting and town meeting permitting, and I'll get to that. In our case, because it's mixed use, and with residential as part of that mixed use, and that we have a 10% clause in there for affordable housing, it falls under the Housing Choice Act. That means, in a perfect world, and I'll get to this, town meeting vote would only take a majority vote, and the special permit you would issue would also only be a majority vote. So this morning, I changed it all to meet the new law. It's the law, you don't have a choice. Well, Caris called me, that's Town Council today, and said the Attorney General's Office said, yes, everything you said is correct, but we have not put in any regulations or protocols on how to make this all happen. And because we have not done that, it is not in, it's not being enacted as we speak. And the Attorney General suggested we go back to the two-thirds, and if it failed, she said, we'll visit that later, because, I guess she meant if it failed at two-thirds but passed that majority, we'll visit that later and see what the directive is, and if it passes two-thirds, then, you know, we'll deal, you don't have to deal with anything. But she, Town Council said, we're gonna have to go with two-thirds vote at town meeting.
Is she aware we're a week away from a master plan being completed?
I know she knows it's darn close. I didn't talk to her about that today. It was more that, I've read this law, I read it this morning again. It was clear, it's a majority vote, but, you know, just because an act is passed, doesn't mean the rules and regulations have been enacted.
I got, yeah.
Yeah, therefore, it's not a current requirement, I guess is the best way. It's very confusing, but.
As I found out through the years, zoning is nothing but confusing.
Yeah, so I went back and changed it all back to the way it was, the way I thought it was, and don't be surprised if we're gonna be required to do something different whenever they get their act together, and I have no idea when that's gonna be. But it's not gonna be by Friday, I'll tell you that. Let's see. Oh, we, he had a concern about, there's language in the bylaw that says that if they want a change, a minor change, and the Planning Board fails to respond, in other words, you fail to vote on the minor change, that there's nothing, it doesn't say what happens next. And I agree with him, and I suggest that if you don't, if the board doesn't vote, just like in a special permit application or a subdivision application, if you don't vote, then it's approved by prescription.
Yeah.
And so if they request a minor modification, you don't vote, it's approved as a minor modification. I put that language in there. I didn't have a problem with that. Oh, then I, we had some language about suspending a permit, and he is correct that there's already language in 40A, Chapter 40A, about what happens if someone violates the permit. And the zoning enforcement officer, John Arrowsen, it's his job to make sure, and if you're still not happy with that, then you suspend it. So I just juggled the language around, that's all, and you can't preclude Chapter 40A. So we're going along with 40A, but I just put a little language in there to spice it up, I guess. That's it. I don't think any of this is earth-shattering, other than the Housing Choice Act, and that is, I don't know if it's a big deal, not a big deal, but it's confusing, and I'm hoping, I understand it better by Friday, and I'm hoping Town Council can explain it better by Friday. She was frustrated, let's put it that way.
Did you, Jack, did you discuss with her specifically that, the waiver vote?
He said that because of the bylaw, I mean, the act not being enacted yet, he had, you know, we could do whatever we want. I put in a majority vote on the waiver.
Okay.
Because that's what it's gonna become anyway.
Yeah, that's what it, that's what it should be. I just wanna be sure that we're consistent throughout the bylaw. Now, I did it, like I said, I apologize, but I didn't get a chance to do a deep dive on this thing till the last couple of weeks, and that's prompted some of the stuff I've been emailing you. And, you know what, there's, most of what I have left is just ambiguity and stuff that we could correct at a later date. I'm not going to beat a dead horse here, Dave Pratt, to our, to our meeting, but what I'll do is I'll refer, because it's nothing that's gonna change the intent of the bylaw and/or create technical ambiguity. So you and I will address it after, hopefully this passes, and then we can do another revision down the road. All bylaws tend to be liquid and, you know, develop changes as you go, so. With that, I'm not sure if everybody was able to receive a copy of the final bylaw.
Some folks asked me, and I got it to them. Yep.
Okay. Certainly, if not, I believe that it's available on the site, and certainly be able to speak at town meeting if there are any questions. Is there any further questions of the board?
Oh, I think we need it.
Are you guys satisfied with?
I think we need it.
I think the town knows we need it. I think this is an important bylaw for Mendon, it's long overdue, and, you know, with the, with the, with the affordable component, I think it'll help move us in a direction that will put us in a safe harbor condition. Eventually. Yeah, it's gonna be a while, but we'll work in that direction. I will now take any questions from the community.
Freddie Chanel, 16 Washington. Jack, the edits?
I can't hear them.
Come on up. Come on.
Mr. Chair, I'm just wondering if the edits that Jack has made in the last 24 or 48 hours have been made onto the website already?
No. Once they vote tonight, I will put them, I've made them, they're here, ready to go, but I thought it would be prudent to have the board hopefully vote on them, and then I'll put them on the website. I'll email them to whoever would like them, and off we're running.
And certainly, if anybody has questions between now and town meeting, you can reach out to me, either by email or Gail has my cell number. I'm always available. I can always be reached, and I'll certainly do my best to answer your questions for you. If not, we have Jack. We can reach out to Jack, but I think what we have now is, as far as intent, I mean, there's always some housekeeping need to be done on a bylaw once you get it in place. I think the intent of the bylaw is good. I think it's good for the town of Mendon. I think it's important for the town of Mendon, and it, I guess, enough said, we can beat this thing to the dead horse, which we have, but.
You're gonna tell more of the data.
Yeah, and there's gonna be more bylaw changes coming forward, and a lot of this stuff will start blending in more cohesively than it does today. The problem with Mendon's bylaws is that they're all, they're kind of choppy, they're not kind of brought together all at once. But that's the next step, is CMRPC is gonna redevelop our bylaws with us to make them more consistent, so. But this is an important step in that direction, so if, unless anybody has any further questions, I'm gonna ask that a motion be placed.
Any more questions?
Anybody up there?
Nope.
I'm making a motion to accept the bylaw.
Any more questions? Last chance. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Pose. And I don't believe Damon's on board, Jack, so that's a four.
Three's it. Four. Oh, there's four. Thank you all very much. I wanted to thank all the folks, I've gotten so many emails and phone calls and texts from people, all with good intent and good ideas. I tried to incorporate what I could, and I think you're right. I think this is needed, and honestly, when I started on this journey, I hadn't even thought about the Housing Choice Act, because I thought you had to opt in, and I figured we didn't opt in, so it didn't apply to us, and I was wrong about that. So I think that even shows more to the state and to other folks that were trying to be proactive about how we build our community and do it in the right way, so.
Well, I think, Jack, you and I both know, the state, now they've rolled out round one, round two is gonna include Mendon, more than likely, and more than likely, we'll be enacting in, probably by the end, some by the end of this year. I would think Mendon would be on the target for next year, so we'll have to see how that goes, that plays itself out, but.
So we'll draft a letter to go to the clerk and the Board of Selectmen and the moderator. And off we go. Anybody who would like a copy, and I'll put it on tomorrow on the website, and of course you can email me.
All right. Do we have any other agenda items tonight?
Nope.
Okay.
Nope, we have a meeting on the 15th. That's it. Yep.
Meeting on the 15th. We have 23 Cape that's been continued till then. Anyone who wasn't here when the meeting opened, 23 Cape has asked for continuance due to, our council wasn't able to do a review of what their council had sent to us, so, once we get that response from our council, we will, we will be able to continue, so that should happen by the 15th.
Yeah, and our acoustic consultant will be there. He has answered the concerns of the residents. I put that online, and we'll make it, I think I made it available to you, but you'll get that. 55 Cape will be on there, and so will the gas station, 147 Hartford East, so you'll be. the gas station, one forty-seven Hartford East, so you'll be busy.
Okay. Eric?
Jack just answered the question. Do you need a motion to close the public hearing?
Yes, we need a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing for the mixed-use bylaw. Second.
All those in favor? Four, four zero, Jack.
Got it.
Jack, before you go. Jack.
Yeah, is that Jay? No, James?
Yes, it is.
I, yep.
Before you go, I just wanted to tell you that tonight's my last meeting, and it's been an absolute pleasure working with you.
Oh, likewise, this is your last meeting, huh?
Yes, sir.
Oh, James, I wish I was there. I'll have to stop by and, and thank you. That was nice, and it's been a pleasure working with you as well.
Thank you, Jack. Appreciate it.
For anyone who wasn't aware, Mr. Quirk here has decided not to run again. We we should thank him for his time on the board. He's, we both came on the same year, which was fourteen, fourteen years ago. And he's done a service to this town. He's done, this isn't an easy job, as we all know. Fortunately, we have to represent six thousand, and sometimes when you're facing a small component of the community, you have to take what they have and understand their, their plights. But you also have to understand you represent six thousand and not just a small group of people who live around the project. Sometimes it takes more than that. And James has done an excellent job and tried to be fair in every, so I personally like to thank Jim for what he's done.
I'd also like to thank the people from Mendon that allowed me and voted for me to be on this board. It's been a pleasure. It's, it's quite time-consuming because my business is open at the same time as the meetings. And I've also recently been married. And I want to spend more time with my wife and also more time on my business. But I, I'm not gonna close the door. I'm not gonna say that I'll never be back again. I enjoy every bit of what we do here. The gentlemen that I've served with on this board are the same people that I've been on with since I started. And they've been nothing but solid individuals to work. But the townspeople have always been the most important. They've been important in every decision that, that we have made, and I know I can speak for everybody on that one. But also, for the good of the town has always been the reason why I'm here. And it would also be the reason that I would ever come back would be for the same thing. I, I think that Mr. Kraus is gonna be a a fine member of this board. I think his, his positive thinking will will definitely be an asset to the town of Mendon. I want to congratulate him on, on his, his seat. Thank you all. Thank you, Mendon. You all know where I'll be. I'd love to see you all for hello, whatever it may be. It's been a pleasure.
Bill, you have a hand up in the.
Oh, Mr. Chino.
Hey, everybody. Just wanted to thank Jimmy, Jimmy, myself. We've all served together for a long time. And good luck on your next adventure, Jim, and thank you for, for all the work you've done for the town.
Thank you, sir. Pleasure working with you also.
With that.
Thank you, Jim. Thank you, Jim.
Motion.
Let me make the last motion.
Yeah.
I'd like to make, make a motion to adjourn my last meeting.
Second.
All those in favor? Yep. But, so we'll.
Time goes on.
It does.